All right, good evening. Oh, good evening. Noting the time and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxborough School Committee to order. And I would like to start the evening saying thank you all for coming. Thank you to the principals for coming. I know you've had a long day, like every day, and so thank you for coming. And for Lynn, coming and presenting. I also wanted to say thank you to the Boxborough Finance Committee and the Boxborough Board of Selectmen. They unanimously voted in favor for our building project, to support it on December the 4th. So, thank you very much. And Mary, really, did an amazing job. And they were kind enough to invite us to their meeting on Monday night and on Tuesday night, and to really listen, and so, thank you for that. Okay, I am going to move into the first order of business. Do you have anything you want to say? I just need the warrant.
(inaudible)
Oh, yes, the meeting is being taped. Thank you. Thanks. Yeah, it's okay. Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna read the warrant. 1-8-008 PR on 10/12/17 in the amount of $503,684.16. 18-008 on 10/19/17 in the amount of $380,357.32. Student Activities 18-008 JH in the amount of $9,856. And then the payroll, P-1808 and P-1808V on 10/12/17 in the amount of $2,419,700, excuse me, $522.99. For a total of $3,313,420.92. And if you would just sign the warrant as it goes around. We also have minutes to approve. We have minutes from the October 3rd meeting. Are there any corrections that anyone wants to add for Beth?
Move to approve?
So, I have a couple.
Oops, sorry.
But, no, I just wanted to see if you can, okay. So, the first one, Beth, if you would just add, there was a moment of silence in memory of the recent tragedy in Las Vegas and Puerto Rico. Yep, not a big deal. Well, it is a big deal. It's a huge deal. So, thank you for that. I didn't mean, you know, it's a big deal. And then, on the second page, one, two, three, fourth paragraph down, no, Deanna isn't here, but, oh, okay, so I'm gonna say that Mary was, about midway through, it says, "Mary was in support of using a search firm and moving quickly as appropriate." And then it says, "Deanna Sullivan agreed, but she was concerned about doing the outreach between December 15th and January 15th." So, yeah, that's all I have. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Okay, so that passes unanimously with Bridgette and Paul seconding.
He was quiet.
He was very quiet. Okay, so this is the time in our meeting where we open it up for public participation on things that are not already listed on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, moving on, we are gonna move on to Principal Lynn Newman of the Gates School is here to give us a presentation.
Hold your applause for one second. I'd like to welcome Principal of the Gates School Lynn Newman and Assistant Principal Priscilla Kotique. I'd also like to recognize our five other elementary principals that are here this evening. Principal Segrew, Principal Whitbeck, Principal Crane, Principal Lab, and Principal Kaufman. And Lynn's presentation is, will be presenting on one aspect of the Gates School Improvement Plan for this year.
Thank you, Bill. So, Dr. Kotique and I are very excited to be here to present this evening. This year, as part of the Gates School Improvement Plan, we have decided that one of our school improvement goals will focus on civility, respect, and kindness. We believe that civility is learned through respectful relationships and actions. With this goal, we want to give our students the opportunity to participate in a variety of community service projects and activities that foster trust, kindness, and respect. The purpose of this goal is to build on the Gates' core values, which are generosity, acceptance, trust and respect, enthusiasm, and scholarship. By expanding opportunities for all students in grades kindergarten through sixth grade, as a staff, we have generated strategies to help us meet this goal. Over the past two years, or few years, we have been working towards becoming a responsive classroom school. All teachers have a copy of the first six weeks of school, and the goals of this book are to create a climate of warmth, inclusion, and safety; to treat classmates; to teach classroom routines and behavioral expectations; to help students get to know and care for the classroom and school environment; and to establish expectations for academic work. All classroom teachers began the school year by asking their students to reflect on their school successes and challenges from the prior year, to name the things they are looking forward to accomplishing this year. Students selected the most important goal, their hope and dream, for the coming year, and created a classroom display of class hopes and dreams. Once students have established their hopes and dreams, the classroom teacher builds on these goals by asking the class, what rules in the classroom would they need so that they would be able to achieve these goals? By going through this process, all classrooms were able to generate their own classroom rules. This year, we have 18 classrooms, and each classroom shared their class rules. As teachers reviewed these rules, we were able to generate a draft of our school rules, which reflects the input of all students. Our draft includes four rules: to be respectful, be kind, be safe, and to try your best. Our plan will be to share our new school rules at our upcoming all-school community And this slide is a picture of some hopes and dreams that were from classrooms. They range, the far left is a kindergarten hopes and dreams, in the middle is fifth grade, and to the right, I'm thinking, it was second grade. So, it was a process that we could do with all the kids, which was really nice. And so, now I'm going to pass the mic over to Priscilla.
So, during the building-based professional learning session we had in the early fall, teachers generated a list of activities that would help promote the Gates community. Some activities are carried over from the last year, and others are new this year. Last year, we created an additional opportunity for the sixth-grade students to participate in community service. Students volunteered to use recess time to work on special projects in the school. The students signed up through a Google form, and then teachers selected students from the list of enrolled students. Sixth graders helped with science activities in the younger grades, helped with specials, art, phys ed, and music with younger students. They worked in the library, and they helped teachers with various activity throughout the school. The whole school was involved. The sixth-grade students were very enthusiastic and proud of their participation in the program, and each of them received a special certificate at the end of the year. We're gonna continue this activity again, along with the Green Team Program for sixth graders. We are also having this year, which is a little new, it's a little twist on what we've done before in the past, we have a weekly activity period. Special opportunities for community building happened during our activity period. So far, we have learned school-wide songs, acknowledged Panther Award recipients, watched school performances, and this time for sharing and community building seems to be enjoyed by all, students and teachers alike. I don't know if Douglas can hear us, but each fall, we begin the year with a pep rally. We have our students out in the back, gathered on the hill behind the school. We have songs and cheers. We cheer for each grade level. They stand up and they get cheered by the other grade levels. We sing our school songs. We get out and dance, and it's a very good time by all. We have also handed out numerous Panther Awards. Panther Awards are special Gates Awards that recognize students who have demonstrated, whose actions demonstrate the core values we have in some way. This year, we also challenged the students to read more books than we had read in the school last year. And needless to say, the students were very enthusiastic about the challenge, and our librarian is tracking the number of books that are read and checked out by the students. These are the sum of the activities that we've done in September. Lynn's gonna round it out by October.
And so, we do have some exciting October events that we've had. The first event listed is the Fun Run, and we actually have a fundraiser this year that's different than we've ever had. It's called the Fun Run, and it's going to involve the full community, and we're running tomorrow, if you would. The kids have been pledged to walk laps around a little track. Each lap is 1/16 of a mile, so we're anticipating 30 to 35 laps for the kids, two miles. They have 30 to 45 minutes to walk, skip, dance, jump. We really don't know how they're gonna go around the laps, but we know it'll be with enthusiasm, it will have music coming, and the goal was to raise $20,000, and we have met that goal. So, it's been a new event. We're going to evaluate it to see if it's something to continue to do, but it's been exciting. The kids have really enjoyed participating in the Fun Run. As Priscilla said, we have our all-school community meetings that will continue each month, and the kids have enjoyed participating. When you go into an all-school community event, we have student musicians playing, and last Friday, we had two students playing the piano, and one youngster needed to sit on a ream of paper so that he could reach the pedals. And I said to him, "You're early," thinking he was just coming to watch, and he said, "No, I'm a musician." And I said, "Wow, you play the piano?" He was in second grade, and it was amazing. So, they were so excited, and that's how we start our meetings, and always with a lot of songs. We sang a Bruno Mars song, "You Can Count on Me." And this morning, when two girls came off the bus, they came up to me, and usually, when they come up to me right off the bus, there might be reporting an incident on the bus, or there might be a concern. So, I said, "What's up?" And they said, "We have a song to sing to you." And I said, "A song?" And so, they said, "We wanna sing 'One, Two, Three.'" And I can't tell you that starting your day off with second graders singing a song to you is pretty special. So, we, in addition of our October events, we are reading for the record. We participated in this Read-a-Thon, if you would, and this is a national event. They're breaking the record. It's really to speak to the joy of reading, and all our classes participated. And I would be remiss if I didn't speak a little bit about the Green Team. And the Green Team is an environmental club that we have at school, and they help the, it's for the students, to empower the students around the notion of waste reduction, recycling, energy conservation, and pollution. They've done an amazing job, so we continue to do this. Kate Crosby's been a big part of this as well, so we will continue to do this work, and it's been fun. And then they go on to the junior high, and there's a junior high Green Team as well. And so, we are really excited about this goal. All staff have a T-shirt, so we'll be wearing our T-shirts at all events. We'll be wearing these tomorrow and at all our all-school events. We have worn T-shirts in the past, but these really bring us together as a community, so it's really nice. And the notion of bringing a whole group of people together on behalf of kindness, respect, civility, is really something that we embrace at the Gates School.
Thank you, Lynn. I do love the T-shirts. They're really cool. Thank you so much. Are there any comments or questions from the committee? Yeah, Bridgette?
Just a comment, makes me wanna go back to school again. And, you know, it's really amazing when you think about how education has changed over the years, and I won't go back as far as when I was in grade school, but school is so much more than it used to be, and it really comes through that you are really building a community in your school, and I bet the kids love coming to that. I mean, how wonderful to be in that kind of environment. It really comes through in the stories that you told. Thank you.
I have worked in predominantly schools that are grades three, four, and five, and so it wasn't until I joined Acton that I worked in a K6 building. And the notion is, is how do you bring the littlest together with the older kids? And to do it in a way that's really, that really works for everyone. And I think that that, for me, was a real learning curve. So, to come together in a way that seems very sincere and very celebrated is really exciting. Thank you.
I just wanna add that the time we are in our society, how important this is, for them to have this around them locally, right there, just building those values. I so much appreciate that.
As adults, we are the role models for our children.
Thank you. Yep, Paul?
I really like, um, I'm sorry, I really like that the students are involved in creating the rules by which they will be living, and I just think that's awesome. Thanks.
So, it's taken us several years. We have, to date, 10 teachers who have participated in responsive classroom training. It's a four-day summer training. And so, when Priscilla and I went, we saw this the previous year, and we weren't quite there. So, this was the first year we knew it was a good thing, but we hadn't done it. And I know this is something that's done, I know McCarthy Town has really taken the lead in responsive classrooms, so I'm assuming, David, that these are, you know, as David's watching him, he knows, this is good stuff. It's great. But for the kids to see what those rules are, they need to be simple, but they also need to be modeled. What does respect look like? What does it mean? And, you know, they're simple, and I think they're rules that the kids will be able to really identify.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you very much. So, we're gonna move on to item number six, and I would like to invite the Acton FinCom to come forward. Steve Noon is here as the Chair of the Acton FinCom, and they are going to be presenting their point of view. I will say, Jason is also here in the audience. And did I miss anyone else from FinCom?
No, I think that's it.
Nobody's admitting it, at least, right? Okay.
Yeah, let's remember the civility part of this. We don't have any fun events scheduled for October, but I would be remiss in not inviting all of you to the Town Manager Search Committee. I was having an open forum a week from tonight, 7:30 at Town Hall, and certainly, we'd love to see as many school committee members and as many members of the public there as possible. So, probably for 10 years, the Finance Committee's published a point of view. We try to do it before the budgets are substantially developed, because many years, we would come up and say, "We don't like something," and the answer was, "It's too late." Purpose of the document is to assess the town's financial situation, to point out areas of concern, because the Acton FinCom is charged by the Town Charter to look beyond just the budget year. We're responsible for long-term planning. So, sometimes our concerns are very different than the Board of Selectmen's concerns or the school committees. Make recommendations as to the budget process, and to get some feedback. This is a draft for comment, and we wanna hear some feedback. In the past, once we finalize a document, a slimmed-down version is presented to basically any group that'll let us in. Usually, all the PTSOs invite us in, the senior center, and any community groups that are willing to listen. Now, I know it was in your pockets, packets, so I'm not gonna go through all the slides. I'll spare you that. I'll try and hit the highlights. So, state of the town's finances, they're pretty good. We're still rated AAA by Moody's and Standard Poor. We have a great collection rate, and our demographic indicators are well above average. We maintain strong reserve position. Free cash came in, virtually a million dollars ahead of what we expected this year. Your E and D is around $4 million. I know that's not ours. And the town also has a stabilization fund of $2 million. As to how we compare, median family income, Acton's $152,000, which is a lot higher than Middlesex County or the state. Median family home value of $509 is somewhat higher than Middlesex County, and quite a bit higher than the state. And our unemployment rate of 2% is lower than either of the others. As far as the percent of the average family income that our average family tax bill represents, it's pretty steady. It's 5.55% in 2015, and it was 5.73% in 2010. So, it hasn't, it's actually declined slightly. But if you put it in context of surrounding towns, Concord is higher, they're at 5.9%, but Westford is at 4.8%, Sudbury's at 4.9%, Littleton's at 4.5%. So, the surrounding towns, as a percentage, their tax bills are lower than theirs, than So, skip over. Okay, so, this is a great chart, because it, basically, you can take whatever you want from it. This is looking at affordability. The average single-family tax bill has increased from 2010 to 2015 by 15.5%. Home value has only increased by 3.8%, but average single-family income has increased by 19.3%. So, the good news is, our residents can afford the taxes as they increase. The bad news is, it's always been a premise that investing in-town services increase the value of your home, and that has not been happening. Okay, so, what's our first concern? Just paying the bills. Taxation, as you all know, is limited to a 2.5% growth rate. But the tax levy, it's about $80 million in Acton, represents 90% of the town's revenue. There's very few other revenue sources, and it's limited to 2.5%. But our compensation growth, and compensation for the town is roughly 72% of the total budget, and for the schools, 79%. Has a history of growing more like 4% a year. So, that basically means we're gonna run out of the ability to tax and stay within 2.5%. If you will, total compensation for Acton is around $24 million. Our share of the schools is 57, so it's about $81 million, which is about exactly equal to our tax levy. So, if our tax levy goes up at 2.5% a year, and our compensation number goes up to 4% a year, eventually, we have a big problem. Next concern is capital projects. And there's a bunch of slides on this, which I'm mercifully not gonna go through, because they'll be changing based on some new information. But besides the operational side, we have critical capital needs. Both the town and the schools conducted studies in 2015, 16, on the state of the facilities, and on both sides, we have a lot to do. Okay, say I won't go through those. We'll make a quick stop on land purchases. One of the reasons reserves have begun to decline is we have purchased land, $1.8 million on the Walker property, and another million dollars on River Street property. As yet, there are understudies to what we are going to do with them, but at the moment, they are simply money sitting idly that we used to have in reserve. So, among our other concerns are depleting those reserves to the point where we need an override for an operating point of view. Now, because as I said earlier in the presentation, FY19's free cash came in, $1 million ahead of where it was estimated. Chances are, we can scratch the need for an override in FY19, but we can't put it out of the question in FY20. So, we will, well, the current ALG plan, the Acton Leadership Group Plan, calls for the use of $910,000 in previously untaxed levy capacity. Simply, we haven't always taxed the full 2.5%, so we have some capacity left over. Now, we can do that without a formal override budget vote, and the current plan calls for doing that. So, as it stands right now, the FY19 budget will have a 4.3% increase in the average single tax bill, not a 2.5% increase. So, what are our recommendations? Well, we would like to make sure that we adhere to our reserve policy, and about the minimum level of reserves that the Finance Committee thinks prudent would be a little under $2 million, which if we don't touch the town's stabilization fund, that would be sufficient. As usual, we encourage the use of reserves only for capital items and one-time items. OPEB, at the moment, I think you're in pretty good shape. I think the last report I saw indicated that things had improved, and that I'm fairly comfortable where the schools are. You won't look quite as good as the towns when they get their report, because they looked better last two years ago, but I think, well, I'd say you can stay where you are Capital projects, for all possible, use our in-house resources. We'd like to see your capital budgets increase, and do as many of the existing identified projects as we possibly can. We understand that it's been underfunded for a long time. As far as future capital projects go, we need to, taxpayers only get one tax bill, so we need to coordinate what we do in terms of major capital. So, we would like to see a prioritized list. Now, it's not simply the FinCom asking for this. The town has a capital committee that's charged to do exactly this. As far as our As far as our recommendations go, while we haven't taken a formal vote, because we never take a formal vote until we see it in a warrant, you do have the support of the Finance Committee for the twin school project. Other recommendations, yeah, try and adhere as close as possible to what MSBA will reimburse. Reserves, we recognize we're going to use some reserves. Like I said, the minimum level we want to see is around $2 million. We hold on to that stabilization fund, we're fine. However, if the board of selectmen and the town meeting decide to use that money on purchasing another parcel of land, then that would restrict how much money we would have available to dedicate to operating. And as we anticipate going to the bond market, probably not till FY20 or '21, this is the wrong time to run our reserves down to zero. Yeah, we don't have to go through that one. Okay, here's the one you're not going to like. And that is, we recommend trying to hold operating budgets to no more than 3% growth. Basically, that's kind of the revenue growth we're looking at. It simply isn't sustainable to keep it up. But to illustrate the point, again, from a long-term point of view, growing our operating expenses at 4% a year for five years as opposed to 3% a year for five years gives us another $18 million we have to raise in taxation, all other things being equal and all other things being reserves and state aid. That roughly means, instead of increasing taxes at 2.5% a year or slightly more in Acton, we would have to be increasing it at 4.5% a year every year. So that puts us in a position of an operating override year after year after year. So what are our key conclusions? Operating overrides are coming. Capital overrides are definitely coming. We would prefer not to have them in the same year. Borrowing, it's going to happen. Interest rates are low and probably will only go up. So the sooner we get to this and get it done, the better off we'll be. Now, as I said, this is draft for comment. You don't have to comment all tonight. You can send us your comments in email. You can come to our meetings and make your comments if you want. But with that, I'll entertain questions as I have at least a minute left.
About. Go ahead, we'll take comments. Yep, Paul.
Thank you, Steve. So I had the benefit of a preview with the ALG, and I liked that we're talking about this now. One question I do have, you mentioned capital spending?
Mm-hmm.
And there seemed to be some encouragement to go ahead and move forward with the critical projects. Is there a target amount of spending that you might be thinking of, or is this dependent on the nature of the projects?
I mean, we haven't, we haven't seen any of your budget numbers yet, but last year, you increased the amount of capital in that light on significantly, and we'd like to see that continue. And we understand we may have to cough up some more reserves to make that happen. What the exact balance will be, it's too early to tell.
Steve mentioned the Acton Capital Planning Group, and I know Christina sat on that. Are you sitting on that? Do we have someone on that now?
Yes.
Good, okay.
We haven't met yet.
Okay.
So that's why I was like grabbing my calendar, thinking, oh my God, when's the next? No, we haven't met yet.
So you mentioned kind of sticking with MSBA for the capital improvements, the large one. What if there were some thing that we'd like to do with something like solar panels where, you know, the capital is high, but the payoff might be, you know, five years or something like that? Is that something that we can work with?
Yeah, I would say that anything that has a return on investment is worth at least considering, whether MSBA considers it a, you know, something they'll reimburse or not.
Hi.
Hi.
So I guess I have a question, and I know I haven't been to the ALG meetings or FinCom meetings, but as you talk about the 3% increase, we, I mean, we're noticing, and you can, you'll see in the presentation for enrollment, enrollments going up significantly where we didn't think it was going to, right? We thought we were at a downward trend, and now we're not. The biggest part of the budget is salary, which we can't control those increases. In our budget every year, we've really only added staff to accommodate the change in the diversity of the students as well as, obviously, we had to increase classrooms for kindergarten. At one point, right, so I mean, it is hard to obviously meet that 3% without laying off or stuff like that. The one thing that we've seen, which is also causing the enrollment, and it doesn't seem to be discussed much, is the huge activity of building and, you know, in the town, which is causing a huge growth in the student population. And we don't ever seem, as a town, to address that. We just keep adjusting how much land we're, you know, allowing for a house or this or that. We seem to be going around the rules so much that our housing is increasing significantly and the population is increasing. So is that, because that's the only way it seems to meet the FinCom objectives, is to kind of get a hold of what the population increases.
Well...
With no businesses either, right? Because we have no income other than taxation.
We have a very small commercial industrial taxation base. So when we look at this, and, well, I'll just say it. There's been a lot of people for a long time saying, well, school enrollment's going down, why isn't the school budget going down? I've been one of the few that would say, no, it doesn't work that way. So now you've got an education problem, not in the sense of educating students, but educating taxpayers as to why all of a sudden enrollment's going up. And part of it is what you're saying. A lot of it is people selling houses, you know, who've, kids are long out of the system to people who have three kids moving in.
Well, right, but we have huge complexes going up in the city, in the, we're going to become a city. In the town...
Gee, I hope not, dear.
We haven't even, we haven't even faced the one that's going up on the edge of Maynard, but we have these big complexes and the parcels of land to build a house keep getting smaller and smaller based on the requirements that used to be bigger.
So you would be in favor of buying more open space. However, then I will point out to you that that means you would have less reserves. It's not an easy question. It's definitely not an easy question.
Any more questions, comments? All right. Steve, thank you so much for coming and presenting.
And thank you for supporting the school-building project.
Yes, I'll second that. Thank you, thank you. All right, so the next thing on our agenda is exactly what Steve was talking about, school enrollment. So I'm going to turn it over to Marie to talk about those changes.
So this is not the full enrollment report that you're going to get at your next meeting, but I wanted to get you everything we have so far as quickly as possible. So we do have the official October 1 report in your packet, and we rushed our demographers to do the enrollment projections much earlier than we normally do because we are engaged with the MSBA. And they have delayed our discussions with them about enrollment because they knew that we were, we have changes in our enrollment, and they were willing to wait for us to get our numbers official. So what you see in your packet is the October 1 enrollment report, and we have the NESDEC projections already, so those are in there. I passed out a chart for you as well, based on the NESDEC projections. Marion Ashton is doing the enrollment projections as well for us, and we should have those soon. And we'll pull it all together and have some presentations for you officially at the November 9 meeting, as well as Andrew's going to do the junior high education report that night, and he has a class size and enrollment projection report that night. I am going to give you some highlights, though. So I'm kind of surrounded by numbers here, and I, the more I look, the more I find. So the big news is that there's been a real change in enrollment projections over the last two to three years, and a big driver is housing sales in Acton and Boxborough. So Acton, in calendar year 2015, had 310 housing sales, and in calendar year 2016, had, I'm sorry, I said it wrong, in 2014, they had 310; in 2016, they had 515. So it was a 65% increase in housing turnovers, which is one of the biggest drivers of enrollment. In Boxborough, it went up 33% in those two years. So what you see in this two-sided color document that I passed out, the blue line, so I'll do the K-12 first and then the elementary's on the back. So the K-12 shows the blue line. K to 12, we peaked with 5,860 students in FY10, in 2009, 2010. At that, in 2015, we were at 5,463, so we had dropped 400 students. We were projecting just two years ago that we were going to drop another 1,000 students, roughly 100 a year. That's the blue line. A year ago, the red line, it had, the housing market had picked up quite rapidly, and it already changed that much, and we moved from thinking we were going to drop 1,000 kids to moving, we were thinking we're going to drop 500 kids, to 49, 42. Now, the NESDEC projections are actually showing we're dropping very little anymore. We're going to be flat through 2025 and then start to increase roughly about 100 kids through 2028, which is how far the projections go at this point. So this year, we have 5,405, and we're going to be flat. The 53, 78 is the lowest in FY20, which is only 30 kids fewer than we have now. So pretty dramatic difference in two years. Our hope is that it doesn't keep, the slope doesn't keep changing in that direction. But we're watching it as closely as we can, and fortunately, MSBA is engaged with us. I think the building project proposal for the twin school with the preschool included is still the best option for us to deal with this enrollment. And what it means is Phase 2, when we get to talking about Conant, may end up being a larger proposal than we had anticipated at the beginning. I don't think we can have a bigger proposal than we have for this project to elementary schools and the preschool. Flip it over. The elementary looks quite similar. We peaked with 3,050 kids in '07, '08. In '15, '16, we were just over 2,700, which is right about where we are right now. So we've been flat for three or four years. We continue to be flat, but the, so the green line is where we are and where we're projecting right now. We're at the trough. We're at the bottom for elementary. We're going to stay flat for two or three more years and gradually start to go up. And going out eight to 10 years, you can see that we go up a couple hundred students. And again, the blue line, two years ago, we thought we were going down 500 kids. Last year, we thought we were going down 200 kids. Now, we see us flat going up 200 kids. The, just yesterday or the day before, we got the NESDEC projection separate by town. Boxborough, this year, we have 65 kindergarteners. Next year's projected to have 75. So that's four full classrooms if the targets, if it doesn't come in higher. The classrooms are already full, so we're already shifting program and spaces. We did that this year. We'll need to do that more next year. The rest of the enrollment report also has a lot of interesting information, our demographic information. We've been saying for many years that our student population has changed quite a bit. This continues to be the case. Demographically, our Asian-American students continue to grow at Conant and Gates. Conant has moved from 60% Asian-American last year to 67% this year. Gates has moved from 51% to 56%. Our English learners, the overall growth was not quite as fast as it has been. We're up to 280. I think we were at 248 last year this time. But again, somewhat concentrated in certain schools. So Conant has 55 English learners and Gates has 61. And some of those are very concentrated in specific grades and in specific classrooms. So we're really looking at our staffing patterns there. I had reported this before, but kindergarten came in 55 students higher than projection. We were projecting 298. We're at 352. Last year, it was 44 higher, and that's why these slopes are changing so quickly. That being said, overall, elementary is flat. It's only up 10 kids. So it's not the case that we've increased enrollment. We haven't increased enrollment. We're flat. We're flat K-12. We're flat K-6. The junior high had a bump. This was a bubble year. So they went from 9/11 to 9/64. We knew that was happening. They're supposed to come back down next year. They stay pretty flat, but this is a pretty significant year at the junior high. We've not had this many kids in eight teams before. When we were this high before, we had eight and a half teams. So the 7th and 8th grade both are big, and it should ameliorate next year. The high school is down 40 students this year from last year. The high school is beginning to see some drop. So they were still peaking as the elementary was dropping. And our economically disadvantaged students continue to grow by roughly 1% to 1.5% overall. But again, some certain pockets of schools, Gates grew from 10.5% to 14.5% economically disadvantaged students in one year. And we have a couple schools at 12.5%, several schools at 9% to 10%, and we're 9.5% overall. So that's a quick summary. We'll do a presentation at your next meeting, but I wanted to get this out there, and the MSBA is looking at it, the Ashtons are looking at it, and we'll continue to do what we can to project this and to feed it into our budgeting for classroom sections. The class sizes are also in this packet. It would be great if you guys could really kind of look at all these charts between now and your next meeting, and we will be talking about them more. 3rd and 4th grade are over-class size guidelines, and they're at a place where we're concerned about them. They're 24 and 25 across the board in 3rd and 4th grade, and we have to really think about that. Other than that, we're relatively reasonable with our class sizes. Other than that, junior high blip, which should... Other than that, junior high blip, which should be better after next year. Happy to answer any questions.
I like your chart. It's very informative. Thank you. I know last year, we brought up during the lottery system, that we would evaluate the ELL learners in regards to the lottery. We have to start doing that because it's not a matter of we're gonna put more teachers in one school. That affects, it affects the classes when you have so many ELL learners in, you know, in one class. They, they need to be spread out. No, no school should have more ELL learners than another school. And it really needs to be a criteria as part of the lottery system. We can't, we can't keep just saying, whatever school you wanna get and we're just gonna pick it as a lottery. We really need to start having, bless you, if you, if you meet your cap for ELL, you know, like if you look at the lottery and you say, okay, we have X number of ELL learners, we need to spread them across the system. And I know, you know, I know it's really hard to start saying to parents, you can't go to a school, but we can't keep putting all the ELL learners in one school and then that school has a huge amount of, of learners and the classes, you know, you're gonna have struggling students.
I hear you. We have looked at it. It's really interesting. We've done some distribution with the lottery, but the lottery is kindergarten in March. Most of our English learners are move-ins in the summer, in May, in June. And so, those students are being placed after the schools are full. And one of the things that has happened that has caused bigger pockets in certain grades and classrooms is they've, it's happened when we've added a classroom to a school. Now, we have all the seats in one school and then all the move-ins go into that school in that grade. And our English learners are a bigger percentage of our move-ins. So, we're, we're looking, Dawn and I are strategizing. We're working with our registrars. We're doing the best we can to distribute our students, but we haven't quite figured it out without oversubscribing schools in the summer.
The other big challenge is that with our kindergarten class, we screened 97 of our incoming kindergartners because their families identified that they had a home language other than English. And of those 97, 47 qualified. That's a very high rate that we've not seen before. We've been seeing around 18 to 25% of kids screening in at that grade level. So, that's an additional thing and that doesn't happen until after they're here. So, it's also difficult to place based on that alone because the screeners happen in September.
Any more questions? Paul?
So, thank you, Marie. I had a different question, but this is reminding me of a new one. Oh, no, I remember when I first joined the committee, I, I remember seeing that the class size, the incidence of class size being above policy was maybe 50% or more. And as, as a couple of years went by, that number dropped and I, I felt like the trend was, was favorable. And so, I've lost track of what, what that percentage is, but I'm just wondering if we can revisit that, that percentage of, I'll call it compliance.
Yep. I mean, that's a great point. We were 55 to 60% over-class size guidelines back in the Acton public days. And we had, you know, people say, where did the kids go when you had 3,000 kids instead of 2,600 kids in bigger classes? And we had 26s and 27s. We were 55 to 60% over, we're about 15% now, 12 to 15%. But we're really trying not to have that.
Diane?
I can ask this question next time when Mary Ann's here. It's a bit technical, but what I'm wondering is, why the change? Why, why, how did we miss it? And it's not just our community. It's other communities who have really been surprised, expecting the enrollment to go one way and it goes another Lexington, for example. So, I'm wondering if this type of trending, I mean, what I'm asking is for your perspective because I'm only three years in here. But is there, is there a move to reevaluate the algorithms that we use, that we depend on as our baseline, like the cohort survival method and so forth, to establish trends? Or is, or is this just, does this just happen? Surprises happen and we just have to weather them?
You know, it's so interesting, Diane. Over 20 years, incredible accuracy, incredible, within, you know, .3%. The economy, right? So, '07, '08, '09 completely stopped housing sales and so on and so forth. Nobody projected it would pick up as rapidly as it picked up. And turnover of houses is the biggest driver of increased enrollment. So, it really is a difference in how you would project it based on, it's just how quickly things changed. Bill has done a lot of projections. He can maybe add to it. I have asked the towns for census, cause that's another way you can look at it. And we have multiple people looking at it in multiple different ways. But you're right, it's happening in a lot of towns. These western suburbs are selling houses and, and then some of these developments way faster than anybody thought they would three to five to seven years ago. But I don't know.
No, I would, I would agree with Marie. This is a phenomenon that has been happening in the greater Boston area, especially over the last four to five years. And it's, it's all due to economic, well, it's due to economics. That's, that's one piece. The other thing that the demographers cannot take into account is that every 20 years or so, in most communities, there is a generational shift. So, the turnover of houses, where houses that are occupied by seniors or those who no longer have students in school, they remain in town for a while and then there's a time for, for them to move. And it's families that are moving in to those houses that are being sold. So, when real estate activity in these good economic times grows, what, what, what towns like Acton and Boxborough are realizing is student enrollment is growing as well. The cohort survival methodology is really the core of, of enrollment projections. You know, I think that that is a solid core model, but there are times when we have to factor in, or we try to factor in, some of these other conditions. And so, so yes, we are surprised every now and then when we get these wide shifts in, in projections.
So, I, I know the lottery process. I don't know the, you know, inner workings of it. But I'm wondering if there's something we could do in anticipation of things happening in, in the summer? Maybe a set aside in each of the schools to accommodate and, you know, some anticipated influx of ELL learners?
I think we're, this is a pretty slippery slope and a dangerous place for us to go as we start to think about Title VI and Title IX. The, one of our own, our nondiscrimination policy actually speaks to the fact that students who are homeless or of limited English speaking ability are protected from discrimination in accessing our course of study and other opportunities available. So, the thought of making exceptions for them or forcing people into certain places because of a status around English language learners is actually prohibited under those Civil Rights Acts. So, I think that's a, that's a, that we would not be able to do that, be my thinking.
So, we could do a couple of more questions, but this is all gonna be covered in detail at our next meeting. So, if everybody, I definitely don't wanna cut anybody off, but if you take the time to really, if everybody could just take the time to really read their packets and understand what's gonna be presented for the next meeting and then we can come and have a more in-depth discussion. But anybody who wants to talk, you know, I'm not gonna cut you off. Katie?
No, 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 really, I know, I seriously don't. I'm serious. I don't remember it.
Yeah, yeah, go, go right ahead.
All right. Just in favor of not forgetting it. At what point does racial segregation, even if it's self-segregation, become an issue? Because if we were a district school, we would be redistricting right now. I am concerned that the school we are not touching with our building project is the school with the least number of white kids. Like, does that open us up to, I don't know. I'm uncomfortable with it.
So, we've reached out to the Department of Ed and, you know, we're trying to see what we can and can't do. What Dawn just said is relevant to the same question. About five or six years ago, we did work with the Department of Ed about this and we were told that we could not desegregate. We don't have an achievement gap. And to force decisions by race. So, we look at it, we work, you know, but...
These are all really important issues. So, I think next time, if we can come back and have a more in-depth conversation about it, it would be, it would be good. So, okay, quick.
And I probably could save it, but I'm not gonna remember it. But it, I'm actually not talking about the, so I don't, I don't look at ELL as only one population. I don't look at ELL as only Asian, cause we have a huge ELL population that's European, that's, that's Indian.
Oh, I agree. I don't either. It's very diverse.
Right. So, I'm not, I'm actually not looking at it as self-segregation. It's more of providing services so that the, the children's needs are fully met and, and they're not overwhelmed with case overloads, cause it just seems like in that school, there's, in two schools, there's case overloads and the students aren't receiving the services that they really, they really need.
Remember that you, we added a teacher last year at Conant. So, we have two EL teachers at Conant at the moment, for that purpose. Sure.
All right. Thank you. I'm gonna move us on to the elementary school funding report and I'm gonna turn that over to Marie again.
So, in your packet, you have the report as well as a spreadsheet. This was all in your packet in June and it's the same presentation. I added two or three slides and moved a couple of things around. At the June meeting, when you had it, it, there were so many things at that meeting and it was the last day of school. So, I wanted to really go over it more in a little more detail and give you a chance to ask questions and make sure everybody's fully understanding what we're talking about doing here. And I'm a little disappointed that my principal colleague, Friends, did not give me a round of applause. Just stop it. All right. Note to self, don't do that again. Okay. So, the timeline, last year, we had a goal around this and during the year last year, the leadership team, the principals and central office administrators spent a lot of time thinking about this and what we could do and solutions and so on. And then, we brought forward recommendations in June through a report and we're looking at a final decision and implementation this year for next year. So, the goal is to have this implemented for September 2018. The goals here are around how we're using regular ed classroom assistance, the role, the purpose, the distribution, the funding mechanisms, and to look at equity across elementary And the outcomes include a vision of regular education classroom support staff for teaching and learning across all schools, some procedures, looking at the funding and some recommendations about equity for assistant funding. We have, we're gonna talk a bit about the recent history, the funding data and the recommendations. So, the recent history. There's a longstanding history of regular ed classroom assistance at elementary level. PTOs have been contributing towards assistance in Acton for 25-plus years. That's not the case in Boxborough. There are unique aspects to how these resources are used. There are a variety of funding sources. There are actually three different funding sources that we're talking about. There's the appropriated budget, there's the PTO funding, and there's the before and after-school funding. In 2011, Dr. Mills, who was superintendent at the time, recommended increasing the share of what the budget was funding for classroom assistance and with an attempt to decrease the reliance on PTO funding. And again, Blanchard has a different history. Staff positions were only funded through the appropriated budget. So, looking at the funding and the full chart is in your packet, as well as the two pieces of it are also in the slides. So, I'll show them on the screen in a minute. Currently, we're spending about $1.1 million on regular ed classroom assistance from the three different funding sources. Each school has about $82,000 in the budget. That's about half a million dollars in the budget for classroom assistance, regular education classroom assistance, which is enough to fund roughly six positions at about 19 hours each. PTOs are donating money. It ranges from zero to $95,000. It's quite varied by school. Similarly, the before and after-school programs, money from those programs are being used for assistance actually in all six schools and that also has a wide range of amount. So, the before and after-school program history, this is something I added to the presentation just to give you a little bit of background. Community Education ran the first before and after-school childcare program in the district. Started in 1978. I'm a little scared that they had the folder that described it. With several handwritten notes from Bill Ryan, who was the director of community ed at the time. It was $53 a month, five days a week. And then, about 15 years ago, maybe a little bit more than that, Douglas began a program and then Merriam, as a way to provide needed before and after-school care for families within the school and also to fund programs that were important to those schools. That went along swimmingly for a while. So, there was a big program in the administration building, run by community ed. Kids from any school could come. And then, Douglas had a program, Merriam had a program. We had parents in other schools saying, we really wish we had a program in our school. At that time, Bill Ryan was the superintendent and he said, you know what? We should run these programs through community ed. So, the newer programs got started through community ed. And programs were started at Gates, Conant and McCarthy Town about eight to 10 years Blanchard also had an extended-day program. It actually was originally started through community ed and then Blanchard began to run it themselves. And when we regionalized, Blanchard continued to run their own extended-day program at Blanchard. So, now we have six schools, three of them running their own program, three of them with programs being run through community ed. A couple of years ago, due to enrollment, we decided to not continue the program at McCarthy Town and instead, we have kids walk over to the admin building. And at that time, we decided to take the money from Gates, Conant and McCarthy Town and distribute it evenly among the three schools. So, at that time, two or three years ago, we took a step in the direction of taking all the community ed money from before and after-school and distributing it evenly among three schools. And then, three schools are running their own programs. And then three schools are running their own programs. Money from all of those programs are being used for assistance in the classroom. All right, and this is just a little bit more. So again, Douglas, Merriam, and Blanchard continue to run their own programs. Community ed runs a program at the admin building, which still has, I think, the biggest enrollment of all the programs, Gates and Conant. 75% of any surplus is divided evenly between Gates, Conant, and McT. The other 25% is kept with community ed. The tuition for these programs, one of the issues we have is as revolving accounts, the tuition for these programs is only supposed to be used for costs directly related to the programs. So what we've been doing is actually charging the daytime assistance to the appropriated-budget assistant account, which we run over all year. And then at the end of the year, we take money out of utilities to cover the assistance and we take money out of the before and after-school programs to cover utilities. So we're meeting the law, but we're doing it kind of after the fact. So that's one of the things we want to simplify. And then we have the numbers. So again, there's a one-page sheet. These are last year's numbers. We're just getting into this year. In fact, tonight, in your packet, you have the PTO donation letters from the various PTOs. So this spreadsheet, from left to right, I added to this spreadsheet when we did it in June, the lunch and recess monitors, because they're part of our solution of how we're going to make changes here. So each school gets roughly $26,000 to $29,000 for lunch and recess monitors. People, when I put it in as dollars, people always say, "Why do the dollars vary?" Because the staff varies. Some of them are on Step A, some of them are on Step E, et cetera. But everybody gets three 12-hour-a-week or 12 and a half-hour-a-week lunch and recess aides. Interestingly, McCarthy Town and Merriam bundle those in with their classroom assistance and use classroom assistance as their lunch and recess monitors. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a minute. All right. So we have lunch and recess aides, money, and then hours. The hours are per week, per school. Then we have the district funding of assistance, roughly $80,000 per school. Merriam has more because they have more classroom sections. So we increased them back when the school grew. They had, at one time, they had four extra classrooms. So that's, the money is roughly $80,000 or $82,000, and then the hours are roughly 116 hours. Then we have the PTO funding, which varies dramatically by school, and the hours that that supports. Then we have the before and after-school funding, which again, dramatically varies by school. Altogether, we're funding $1.15 million in assistance, 305 hours a week, or 10 FTE. And FTE, they're breaking, broken down into 10, 12, 15, 19 hours each. So an FTE is 30 hours, just so you know. Okay? The bottom chart shows the history, FY09 through FY17. In FY09, we had $132,000 in the budget for assistance, $286,000 were coming from the PTO, and $191,000 was coming from before and after-school for a total of $610,000. Oh, thank you very much. So at that time, 22% was coming from the budget and 47% was coming from the PTOs. Eight years later, we've doubled the amount we're spending on assistance. That money has increased in the district funding and in the before and after-school funding. So we now have roughly $500,000 in the district funding. The PTOs, 258, so almost exactly what they were fundraising eight years ago. And then the before and after-school has grown from 191 to 397. So now the district budget is 42% and the PTO percentage is 24%. So, working with the principals and central office, we came up with a position statement. I'll give you a minute to read it. All right. So essentially, looking at all of this, we believe there's inequity across schools that need to be addressed. And we worked really hard to come up with a way that we could move the conversation forward that could gain the support of everybody. So we have recommendations that we'd like to put in place over this next year, so they're in place for September 2018. All right. So the first recommendation is to restructure the community ed program, move all the before and after-school programs into the community ed division. All right? So to have everything, all six programs, run by community ed. The benefits are listed here, so we'll have more consistency. The fees will be the same, the salaries will be the same. One thing about having all the programs grow separately and run differently, those things aren't necessarily the same. The number of, the possibility of reinvesting the surplus funds into the district. So I'll explain more about that in a minute. The before and after-school program funds to pay for classroom assistance will be fixed because community ed will pay directly for utilities. So the idea here is the following. Community ed's going to run all six programs. We're going to take basically an average of what we expect that surplus to be, which we're going to say is $60,000 per school, 360,000 total. We're going to take $360,000, we're going to do this once and be done. We're going to take it out of the utilities budget and put it into the assistant funding budget. From that point forward, those assistants are paid for by the district. They're in the budget, they're paid for, they go forward that way. Community ed is taking on the responsibility to pay for $360,000 worth of utilities every year. And that's appropriate because the before and after-school programs are being run for three to four hours or five hours a day in each school and they're using utilities. And so again, that's a one-time thing, so they'll be contributing that money from the surplus from running all the programs. So that's the idea. So then, if I go back to the financial slide, so what was $493,000 district funding for assistance and 397 from before and after-school funds, there will no longer be the before and after-school funds. 360,000 more is going to go into the funding for assistance from the district. It'll be at 860 plus the, plus the lunch and recess aid money. So, and it will be distributed equitably across schools, and I'll get into that in just a minute. Okay. So that's the first recommendation. The second recommendation is to standardize the assignment of regular ed classroom assistance. So what we're going to do with the funding for classroom assistance is every classroom in grades one through six in the district will have a 12-hour assistant funded by the district. That 12-hour assistant will also cover lunch and recess for that grade level. So we want to have separate lunch and recess aides. All right? Kindergarten already has full-time assistants. Kindergarten assistants are not included in any of these numbers. We've always kept that separate. All right? So we're essentially taking all the before and after-school money and programming, put it under community ed, use that money to pay for utilities, take that money out of the utilities budget, put it in the assistant budget, and we will then have a 12-hour assistant in every classroom, grades one through six. If one school has 19 classrooms and another school has 23 classrooms, they'll each have a 12-hour assistant in each classroom. Okay? We're also going to have a 19-hour math assistant in the budget, which we've had. All right. So some of the benefits of having a 12-hour assistant in each class, besides the fact that they're helping with teaching and learning and they're supporting small group instruction and they're supporting students, they know the kids, they know the teacher and the curriculum, they're out on the playground with the kids. So this is how McCarthy Town and Merriam have done it for years. So if third and fourth grade are at recess, or whatever two grades are at recess, you'll have six assistants out there with them who know the kids. All right? When a teacher's out, they make a really good substitute teacher. So, and that works really well where we have assistants in classrooms, one-to-one with a teacher. They, again, they know what's going on in the classroom, they know the kids, the needs of the kids, and so on. So those are some of the advantages to this, to this system. Additionally, we're going to continue to allow the PTO funding piece, and it's a harder issue to solve and it's not equitable across schools and it's, it's a hard thing to address. All of this has gone on for 20, 25 years and it's kind of hard to pull back on the staffing that's already in place. And the before and after-school change is already going to cause some schools to reduce staffing, other schools are going to get more staffing, all in an effort to move towards something that's more equitable. So the PTO donations, our parents are working really hard in every school to do what they think is right for that school, and it's something that we want to continue to talk about and continue to think about what we do going forward. So this, it's just another way to look at it. So the whole district and each school, what will be in the budget for lunch and recess, there's $170,000. In the appropriated budget, there's 500. From before and after-school, we're using 360. Those three items total a million dollars, and that's what will be in the budget for classroom assistance. What was in the prior budget was 670, and then the before and after-school money was separate and it was very uneven by school. So, and then this shows that each school will have $171,000 in the budget for classroom assistance. Previously, it was 111. This is all not counting PTO funding, but that 111 was high and low based on school different numbers. Okay. So that's the overview.
Thank you, Marie. I'd just like to add a couple of more comments to provide context before you, we go to Q&amp;A and, and discussion. So in terms of school committee action, what we're looking for the school committee to vote on is recommendation number one. Essentially, a vote, recommendation one is essentially a vote to bring all before and after-school programming under the supervision and administration of the community education department. So we don't view it as, as a process where schools will be without the programming that they have now. After-school program, before and after-school programming will, will, will have to stay, you know, in all the buildings. I see recommendation two and the first two bullets under the additional recommendations as, as really an administrative function. So we're not looking for school committee action on those. Assuming a positive, positive action on number one, assignment of, of classroom assistance, certainly within the scope of what the approved budget is and under the, the guidelines of equitably distributing classroom assistance, and I think it's fair to say is a baseline right now, you know, the assignment of these, of classroom assistance is of course, an administrative responsibility. And, and that, that also follows for the first two bullets under the additional recommendations, if you read through that. The second two bullets under the additional recommendations, however, would require further action by the school committee as, as their policy issues, but, but our, our intent really is that those are discussions that would come at a later date. Thank you.
Thanks. Deanne? Is that okay?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Comments, questions? Deanne?
I love numbers and that's, at first, I want to thank you for one thing, which is that you were able to, this has been a tough egg to crack, right, for years, and you were actually able to get, which I love the principals, but you were able to get all those principals to agree. So kudos to you to get everybody to agree on one solution with this. I think it shows a lot with the principals and with, with you to have gotten this, you know, some kind of solution right now. So thanks.
They really worked hard on this and everybody gave a lot.
And I, and I think it shows because to get all six principals, right, we have six, seven, six, to agree is, is wonderful. So thank you. Not to say that you guys don't agree, I'm just saying.
I think Chris mentioned last, the other night, that you don't usually, so that's a fair.
Yeah, but the other five weren't in the room when he said that.
But it also shows a lot for you that, that you were able to work this through. So thank you very much. I did want to just bring up a few points, which is, you know, we talked about enrollment tonight and we're saying that we've doubled in the number of assistants since 2009 and our enrollment trend has significantly, well, I guess it's from 3,000 to 2,700. Now granted, the, the diversity of the population is very different, but it just shows we've doubled in the number of assistants and decreased in our student population in 300 years. That's, I mean, not 300, you know what I mean? God damn it. Sorry. So that's something to look at. The, the other thing I noticed is when we start using percentages, even though the chart, if you can bring it up, that shows the PTO funding, it, it does say the percentage, right, the PTO percentage has decreased, but if you look at the column for PTO funds, it, even though the percentage has decreased, it's just because we've had, I mean, I do want to make it clear, the PTOs have had consistently had to provide for funding of assistance. You know, it's, it's been pretty much the same. But the one thing that would be interesting to look at is if we're saying that the number of assistants has doubled, but we are struggling in some schools, it would be really important as opposed to an overall understanding of our assistants have doubled, is understanding by school where that's been. Because we say that the number of assistants has doubled, but we also have some schools who have significantly decreased in their assistance. So it's, you know, we're, we're showing that number at a high level that the, that the assistance has doubled, but per school, it's not necessarily true. So that might be, you know, two schools that have doubled and other schools that haven't, or two schools that might have tripled. I don't know what the breakdown is by school because it's a very high number to say doubled and some of the schools are struggling in regards to assistance.
Can I just respond and then you can go on? So the money has doubled, not the number of assistants. So I just want to be clear about that. Some of this is inflationary.
Okay.
And it, it's interesting because when we said we were going to increase the appropriated budget, the real the real goal was to decrease PTO contributions, and there was a real wonder there that as we increase the appropriated budget, if PTOs would continue to keep donating at the level, and I think this bears out that they have. Every single school has more assistance now than they had in '09 or '10 or '11. Every school has grown. Some have, the schools that had fewer assistants five years ago grew the most. And I do have hours in FTEs going back those years by school, but it would have been a lot of data to bring forward.
Right, right, no, no, thank you. I mean, it would be nice to see that. But the one thing I wanted to ask was, and now I've lost it with all my notes, oh, is, I think we brought up this up before because you had presented this to the PTOs, which is, if we're saying that at each school, we're going to have one assistant per grade, right?
Per classroom.
Per classroom, sorry, 12 hours per classroom. If you have, and I'm going to bring up the ELL population, if you have a, a class that has a large ELL population, and that class might have, you know, in, in one classroom, 75% ELL, I, I think that the assistant for that, that falls again on the PTO because the assistant, one assistant for that classroom is very different than having one assistant in a classroom that doesn't have that because the assistant is being pulled in all different directions. They're only there, we say 12 hours, but if you divide that by the number of days, it's only, say, two hours and a quarter per, per day, and that teacher meanwhile is struggling trying to support the needs of the class. So, you know, we say pure evenness, but that, that has to be looked at because it, it doesn't work out as pure evenness. Do you know what I mean?
And we do have other supports for English learners, but I hear you.
Well, just to speak to what Deanne said, it's sort of a faulty way of thinking because Blanchard's been able to provide assistance for the teachers without PTO funding. So that's, it, it, I think in some ways, like, coming from outside of what was done in Acton forever, like, the parents are driving the bus a little bit in Acton and saying, "We think you need assistance." But the school hasn't stepped up and said, "Well, oh, we really need this assistance. We should fund it." I mean, this is a district problem. Like, district, the district, if, if the district feels for the educational needs of the students in our schools, they should be paying for the funding. And I understand that, you know, this is lots, hundreds of thousands of dollars that's coming from, from parents, but it, it can be done. I don't think that you would go to Blanchard and find that the teachers are like, "Oh, my God, we're dying. You know, we don't have enough assistance and everything else." Because however, you know, our budgets have been handled, they've been able to provide the funding for the level of assistance that they felt was needed within those classrooms. And so I think if we're going to move this discussion forward further after this first step, then that really, as a district, we have to say, what, what is a real need for an assistant? And what role do these assistants play? And how important is it that we pay for it? And I think we just have to say, like, you know, funding should come from the district for things that we feel are educationally necessary. And PTOs can continue to fund things, but maybe not positions that are educationally necessary for the kids in the school because that's how all these inequities come about. You know, we have five schools that are getting different, six schools that are getting different levels of funding, and it's not because the parents care any less at the schools that aren't getting the greatest, you know, greatest amount of funding. But, you know, that's a, it's very much become a parent-driven need to say, "Oh, we have to have all of these assistants in these schools." And so I just, I think that as we move on to this next step, you know, whenever that happens, that, that has to be taken into consideration that, you know, regular ed assistants aren't always the answer to all of the problems within the school.
Katie?
Just to piggyback on that a little, the next step is ours. They've done their job, it's phenomenal, I'm in full support of this. But the next step is for us to get behind some common language on a policy, and I think we need to commit to doing that this year.
Mary?
I'm going to second that. So in these numbers, you don't see that the Blanchard PTF does donate and at a significant level. It's just not in operational funds. The operational funds, as you said, the necessary part of education, we're talking about public education, and there should be equity across the system. When I first saw these numbers, I was stunned at the imbalance, and I am thrilled at the steps that have been taken, and I thank you all for that hard work. But I do agree, we need to continue, and it is our work that's, that has to happen next.
Just a quick question. We are really only talking about non-certified, you know, not, non-clerical classroom assistants in the classic kind of Merriam way where you get a teacher and you get an assistant, and it's like your two people, you're, you have, those are your people when you go to school. We are not talking about paraprofessionals, is that correct?
It's interesting, paraprofessionals is often used synonymously with assistants, so.
Yes, and in fact, it's.
So.
The reason I'm confused about it is because in the chart of accounts, it's paraprofessionals, and that includes both types, actual paraprofessionals in the classic way we think about it in terms of special education needs and any kind of other non-certified instructional assistant.
So we have special education assistants, and we have regular education assistants. And this is all talking about regular education assistants, not including kindergarten. And special education assistants are funded based on IEP student needs, different by school because the students are different by school, and they're in the budget separately, in separate line items. Boxborough Public called all of those aides, paraprofessionals, Acton Public called them assistants. And so mostly in the chart of accounts, you see them as assistants or support staff. But special ed assistants, regular ed assistants. So when we say classroom assistants, we're always talking regular ed. Every district uses a different term, instructional aides, special education aides, it's tutors.
Eileen?
Sorry, Bridgette, you're next. First of all, I would like to thank Marie for this wonderful presentation. And I learned so many historic data, and I remember, I don't know, three of us, right? Amy, Mar, Mary, Marie, and me, and include Glenn. We went to, about the same time last year, we went to Gates. And you remember that? So Gates parent, parents really, there are lots of parents went to the library, listened to the whole thing. I can't believe this is happening. So there were one parent mentioned her old child already college, already as a college graduate. The little one almost graduated from Gates, and there is nothing happening about the fun, different funding. And I just learned, I mean, I read this before, but however I learn again, it has been 25 years, could be so many child, children graduated from one elementary school. So it is happening now, I, I'm so happy to see that. I'm in favor of recommendation one, of course, but I would like to, I definitely agree with Tessa and Mar, and Mary. And eventually, those assistant funding should be, come from our budget, not from any other source. However, for our before and after-school program should be considered as one, one of this funding resource because this can be done by community ed, like, you know, just like the recommendation right now. And so that, yeah, that, that's what I, 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 I think, I like that very much. And all those data already passed. I'm looking forward to see what happens in the future. There's, there's a couple of things I'm, I'm really looking forward to see. Erin and her wonderful people running so many different programs for our community, for our school, and she probably going to do, continue to do the wonderful job. And I would like to mention something I would like to see in the future, like in the program. Douglas School really running this, I don't know if, you know, Chris may tell me, if you, if you do them before-school, hours even flexible or just after-school hours, both. You know, they are running very wonderful program. They do before-school and after-school hours, very flexible. Like, the, the kids go there for one hour or two hour, they charge separately. So they earn a lot of money because parents can just drop by their kids there. So they have very, very good flexible, you know, program. I hope, are we, when Erin is running those program, maybe you can consider, that is a very good benefit for, you know, for the, for the parents. And I'm looking forward to see the new result. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bridgette?
I can be quick now because so many people have said things that I completely agree with. I completely agree with Tessa and Mary with respect to the statements they made about the funding, the PTO funding. Generous, although it is, I don't think that we should be relying on that for our operational expenses. And I, as Tessa mentioned, I don't understand the mechanism for deciding why a particular number of assistants are necessary to support different educational philosophies. Is it the school doing that? Is it the parents doing it, as Tessa mentioned? So getting some more knowledge around that will be helpful, I think, in the policy discussion that we'll have to have going forward, so. And I do want to thank the principals for getting on board with this. I think it's great to get some movement, and I'm in total support of item number one.
Okay, so we're actually going to be taking a vote next week, next meeting, right? Or did you want one tonight? I didn't know.
So that's an interesting question. I think it, your practice has been that if the committee is going to vote, that it's, it's indicated on the agenda. It's not, but to reiterate, I guess what I would, I would say is that as Marie, as Marie had articulated during her presentation, this is, this is really a, a second presentation of what you, you received last June, and that the, the information is the same. This is the recommendation that, that we are bringing forward. I, I think that, given that this is a follow-up, you know, there's not a rule, you have a practice, but there's not a rule that the agenda has to state that there will be a vote. If you decided to take action on recommendation one tonight, I think that would be appropriate. But it is your call, if you feel more comfortable putting it on, on, I would, I would suggest the next agenda so that we can, if, if it's an affirmative vote, we can get to all the preparation and planning that will, will have to happen for the remainder of the year.
Can I get a really quick sense of whether you want to vote tonight or not? Yep, absolutely, I'm going to let you.
One, I, I don't want to vote tonight just because we, it is, I mean, I know it was a long time ago that we brought this up, but it, I don't want to get feedback from the community that said we rushed to a vote. I would rather we present it at this meeting, which is what we've always done, and then we vote on it the next meeting. I just, I do feel more comfortable about that, so to let people understand it. Not everyone had seen this presentation, it wasn't as in-depth. So I, I just think we're better off waiting for the next meeting. I, I do want to make a comment in regards to what Eileen said because it is my understanding, and you had made the comment as well, that everyone will have the same before and after-school program. From what I understand, it will not be the same as what, they'll, they'll have the same program, but the programs, they, they will change. I mean, Douglas has a, has a very good program. We haven't been told about, you know, are they still going to, because they have the whole enrichment, after-school, the flexible hours. I don't, that's not a given that that's going to be across the board. And, and that needs to be understood as well, that that's not a given that those are awesome benefits of those programs. I, I don't, I don't think that those benefits are going to happen, right? I mean, I don't, I don't think it's feasible.
Why don't you guys finish the discussion about the vote, and I'll answer, I'll, I'll come back to that.
Okay, and then I, I did have, I'm having a brain fart, so I can't remember what that last.
Yeah, can we, go ahead, Paul, about the, let's talk about just the vote piece, and then we'll.
I just assume vote next time.
Okay. Any, yes, Mary.
Is there an administrative reason that it would help the district to vote tonight?
No, I mean, we, we certainly can wait two weeks, three weeks to the next meeting. I, I'm just, I wanted to throw that out there in recognition that we do have very, very busy agendas coming up. And if, and certainly waiting until next time is fine, and, and I totally understand your comfort level with that and, and that it has been practiced. I think Deanne's point is a good one, that, you know, it was presented months ago. I, I would ask, though, that as we, and it seems like that's what the committee is comfortable with, as we lead up to that point, if you have questions, you know, it's very helpful and it's certainly appropriate to send those questions to the central office ahead of time so that we can be prepared, we can provide those answers. And that may, in fact, help having an effective follow-up discussion as part of that agenda item.
So can I?
Are we, are we still talking about the vote, though? Are you talking about your vote? Are we talking? Well, hold on one second because I think Marie is going to answer that, and, and I just want to get a sense that we are going to hold off on the vote until the next meeting. And if everyone can just please send your questions beforehand so we can come in and actually have a really efficient conversation and take that vote quickly, that would be great. Okay, now.
Just a couple of things about the extended-day programs that will be run in the schools. Community ed extended day is already running enrichment in several schools. They'll continue to run enrichment through community ed in as many schools as there is space available and interest and demand from the community. So the schools won't be running their own individual, personal enrichment courses. It'll come through community ed, the same way extended day does. The drop-in thing is a little bit complicated. It's really hard to staff a program with drop-in. So community ed has piloted that in the past. I'm not sure that's going to be part of the program. I want to be careful not to promise. So community ed's going to run extended day in the schools to the extent that there's demand to warrant it. And similar to what happened, we moved the McCarthy Town program back over to the admin building based on the number of kids enrolling. Those kinds of things can happen. So that will evolve over time. And the last piece is a bit exciting. We have been rolling out breakfast in the elementary schools through the school, the food services program. Students get off the bus 10, 15 minutes before the bell, depending on where they're coming from, and they can go into the cafeteria and grab a quick breakfast. Our free and reduced lunch students have access to a free breakfast this way. This will be part of the extended-day program, the morning program. So we have it in three schools now, we're moving it towards four, five, and six. And by September, we expect to have it in all six schools. And the morning portion of extended day will have breakfast available for kids who are enrolled in those programs and kids who come to school prior to the bell and so on. So that's another thing, that's a part of programs in certain schools that have been very popular, that will also be part of this. Erin, Kate, am I missing anything? Anything you want to add? You have to come up. So Erin Betaz is our director of community ed, and Kate Murray here is our director of our extended-day programs.
I have to laugh a little bit that I was a student at McCarthy Town School in 1978 when extended day started there, and I remember the excitement of that. And then my first year, Bill Ryan told me we were doubling the size of the programs I had started working on that fall, and so that was a big change. So I guess every few years, a big change happens to me related to extended day. I really just want to say that extended day is a terrific program, you know, that's going on for years. We don't know much about how things work at Douglas and Merriam. And so once there is a vote and a real support to do this, we would then immediately start meeting with the folks in those places to understand how those programs run, and the idea being, take what's great about what we do, take what's great about there, and really create something that's terrific for everybody and consistent. So, you know, in terms of promising things. So, you know, in terms of promising things, I think we don't know a lot about those other programs. Blanchard we know more about because Community Ed had created it originally. So presumably many of the things we put in place years ago are still there. Um, but anyway, so I just wanted to reassure anyone who's, you know, worried about things that we don't really know either, and our goal is just to make the best program for all the schools and for all the families that would, would use it, so.
Um, I'm gonna, I, I kinda got a sense that there might be some people in the audience that want to speak, so if you have something, if you could come up? Oh, no. Okay. Great. Awesome. I'm sorry, Dennis and then Diane.
Yeah, I just have one question for, um, Marie. The, um, what do we tack, try to tackle this, what, six years ago?
Uh-huh. And three years before that.
And three, yeah, well, yeah, okay. But I remember the one six years ago. So what's changed in six years? Like where, cause this seems a little more smoother than it was six years ago. So what's happened in six years?
I don't know if I have a good answer. Um, the, the numbers keep growing. The disparity keeps growing. And, um, I think these six principals put their heads together and came together with a lot of goodwill about doing what's best for the whole district. And our students are changing and equity is becoming more and more important as a value.
Sorry, I was screaming into Dennis's ear that I think the biggest change is collaboration. I, I mean, I, I think, I was here when we tried to do it six years ago and that's what made me join the school committee. And I just felt like at, at that time, the, the, um, the method was very different. Kudos to you. I think this method was much better. It was collaborative. So I think that, that made it successful. I do want to bring up one thing, which is, I don't want to tackle the PTO issue this year. We have enough going on. I don't think policy committee should be tackling, Marie had already said that, you know, let's, let's get the before and after school programs all merged and, and working and let's not try and tackle and, and have all the, cause you, it's just gonna cause a huge flurry this year.
I just want to say you can create a policy that doesn't have to be implemented immediately and I think it could take a while, so I, I would say start working on it, but it, not that it has to be, I wouldn't actually implement it at the same time this is implemented, I'd phase it.
Okay. Um, okay. So we will move on, on that note, to the donations.
Thank you, Amy. So the next item are two donations. Uh, the first donation is the annual, uh, the, the annual request for the school committee to, uh, accept donations from the PTSOs, from Conant, Douglas, and Merriam schools. And I think perhaps this is a perfect description of irony, uh, after the discussion we've just had. But, uh, these are donations from, uh, from the schools that will go towards, uh, funding, uh, non-certified, the classroom assistance. Yes, Marie?
Five schools.
Oh, is it five schools?
Blanchard contributes, the Blanchard PTF contributes another way.
Yes.
All right. So, so, uh, I apologize for that. In, in my packet, perhaps in yours, there are three letters, is that right?
The backside.
Oh, I'm missing the backside.
He just didn't get coffee, I mean, not right, but his is, he's missing something.
So, uh, so I'm sorry, blame it on the new guy. That's fine and that's appropriate. So, uh, so I would recommend that the school committee vote to accept, uh, with thanks and appreciation, the, uh, donations to fund classroom assistance from the, uh, five, five of the school PTSOs. The, uh, Conant, Douglas, Gates, McCarthy Town, and Merriam schools.
So moved.
Second?
Do we have to approve these separately?
Um, no, we do not. We can just do it as a bulk. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay. Tessa is abstained. And you got...
Can I say why?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry. Uh, Bridgette moved, oh, sorry, Mary moved. Diane seconded. Um, go ahead.
I'm abstaining, as Bill said, the ultimate ironing because I know that our district needs this money to fund the positions that are already in place, but after listening to that presentation showing the inequities between the schools, I just can't vote in favor of, of accepting those gifts because I just don't, I don't think it's, it's fair. We've taken a good step with what Marie just presented and I think it's a good way to move forward, but I really hope that we can move forward in creating a policy that eliminates this inequity.
Thank you, Tessa.
Can I make another comment?
Yes.
This is, the reason why we did not accept this for op, PTO money for operating budget in Boxborough is because when you're building your budget, you don't know if that money's gonna be there. You, you can't rely on it. And like, so I voted in favor of this because I can't pull this money out right now because it's for this year. But that's why I, I think it should not be a routine part of operating budget. I think there's other parts of the budget, enrichment, that it can be funding and that the school district's covering the, the operating expenses.
Thank you, Mary. Um, so the next item is nine point two, and that is a recommendation to accept a grant from Danny's Place. I sit on the board of Danny's Place, so I am going to abstain from this discussion and have Bill and Bridgette lead it.
So this is straightforward. It's a, uh, it's a, a donation, uh, from Danny's Place to help support, I'm sorry, to help support the AB Community Education Summer Leadership and Training Program. And that information is in your packet.
Move to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary seconded. Paul made the motion. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay. Uh, yes, Paul.
With gratitude?
With gratitude. Yes. Thank you very much. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'd like to say aye.
Yes. Okay. That's unanimous.
Thank you. So, yeah. Okay. Moving on to the school building committee update. Mary.
Okay. School building committee, we are formally in our outreach phase. Um, we have a presentation, we did our first outreach presentation on Tuesday, um, and we had a really nice attendance at that. I was really pleased. We started and, um, Principal Whitbeck and others gave a tour of the school and I think that really helped. JD is working on a video that we will have particularly for, um, outreach sessions that are not at the Douglas school. Um, and so there are flyers all around, they're in your packets, they look something like this. I carry mine around in my purse so I always know where I have to be. Um, but there's lots of dates, so tell your friends. And there's some fabulous, um, social media going on that Adam Klein is taking care of for us. So it's, uh, you can also tell your friends to get connected there. He's pushing out lots of information. Um, we, as Amy said, we've presented to the Boxborough Board of Selectmen and the Boxborough FinCom. The Board of Selectmen, I think, don't actually vote our budget, but they're supporting it. And the, um, Boxborough FinCom voted unanimously to support this. Um, and I know the Acton FinCom, as Steve alluded to earlier, is supporting it as well. So, um, our, our big job right now is getting to the residents and having them understand what it is. So if you can have folks come to the forums, that would be great. Um, special town meeting is December 4th at 7:00 PM. One in Acton, one in Boxborough, they're concurrent. And I think that's it. Thank you.
I thought you, you did a wonderful presentation. It was really very effective. It, the one thing I thought was awesome was, cause you did that tour, people came back like, oh my God. It, why, it is so, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words when, when they physically see it. Um, I see we have three...
We, we need to get to the community where they are. They can't, they won't all come to us. So we need to get out there where they are. That's why we're creating the video, to bring a little bit of that with us. I, cause we talked about that, should we just do it all at Douglas? But, you know, people just get used to their schools or, you know, their library, so we're spreading around and trying to really reach people. Yeah, but I appreciate that comment, yeah. And there's also a frequently asked questions on our website and we put all our information up on our website. And we will be doing, and hopefully we'll connect with Acton TV and do a videotape presentation like Christina did, so that those who won't even come to our forums could still get educated. To me, the big point here is the education has to happen before town meeting. It's, it's complicated enough, um, that we want to do as much as we can before town meeting.
And I'll just add that all of the, um, forums at Douglas actually do begin with a tour. So we can't do them all at Douglas, but, so you still, if you didn't get to go on that one, there's, you come to another Douglas forum, there will be a tour beforehand. Right, Mary? I'm right? Okay, good.
Okay. This is just a joke. All right. Um...
The next item is, uh, an update on the permanent superintendent search. Uh, so in your packet, uh, you received, uh, a memo from me as well as information that we received from three different organizations. So this is a follow-up from our last, last meeting where, uh, where you authorized me to, uh, to request from proposals from, uh, organizations that provide superintendent search consulting services. Uh, as a result of that, five such organizations were, uh, sent a request for proposal, uh, and a copy of that request is, is included in the packet. Uh, the organizations that were solicited for proposals were the New England School Development Council, known as NESDEC, the Mass Association of School Committees, known as MASC, Future Management Solutions Incorporated, known as FMS, Hazard, Young, Atia, and Associates, known as HYA, and a firm, uh, called Ray and Associates. Uh, two of these five firms were non-responsive as they did not provide proposals. And then NESDEC, MASC, and HYA were responsive and, as I've indicated, their proposals are enclosed. Including the packet, uh, in the proposals from each of the organizations, uh, was information, uh, for, uh, describing their process for conducting a search as well as a cost proposal. And HYA also sent some additional information. In reviewing, uh, in reviewing the proposals myself, uh, I wanted to note the following, that the scope of services were fairly similar, uh, in, in, in all of them, uh, in that all three generally provide for initial consultation with the school committee where, uh, where discussions and, uh, actions on timelines and all of the search details are discussed. All, uh, have as part of their process, uh, an opportunity for staff engagement and community engagement to solicit feedback and, uh, use all that data to create a candidate and community profile. All three of the proposals had, uh, a, a certain degree of warranties. So for example, uh, one proposal, if, if you went through the permanent search, but the search did not yield an acceptable candidate, they would conduct the search for free, uh, again, uh, with the exception of, of expenses that are related to that. And, uh, all will provide guidance and assistance in preparing for the interview process, guidance and assistance in contract preparation, if that's what the committee desired, and as well as some other, uh, pieces of information. Uh, I noted that the screening process as described by the three organizations, uh, were also notably different. NESDEC, for example, provides the opportunity for all candidate materials to be viewed by the, uh, the screening committee. Uh, MASC recommends a screening process conducted by their lead consultant, uh, and two other professionals from, uh, that are really from outside, not professionals within our organization, from other organizations, and they choose who those are. And, uh, they do that screening, uh, of, of candidates and, uh, and make recommendations to the screening committee, the school committee screening committee, uh, on, uh, the interview, on, on what candidates to interview. Although they, I, I have to note that, uh, further in their documentation, their proposal, they do speak, uh, to the fact that any of their process, they're willing to modify any of the pieces of their process, should, should school committees desire that. And then HYA's preferred process is for their team to, to interview candidates that apply, do the screening, conduct, uh, conduct initial interviews, do reference checks, and then present a slate of candidates from those, uh, from the application pool, uh, to either a screening committee for initial interviews at this end, or, uh, or directly to the school committee for, uh, going into the public interviewing process. Uh, each organization provided, as I indicated, cost proposals related to their services. Uh, the cost of services include various categories of cost. Uh, so I tried to provide in the memo a comparative summary of the three basic categories of cost. The basic fee, they all, they all, uh, proposed a basic fee for their services. There was an expense category, uh, which included, uh, travel, printing, and, uh, depending on, on the proposal, some other, some other incidental cost. And then each had a separate proposal for the cost of advertising. So if you look at those proposals, uh, you'll find that, and then in totaling these up, I use the upper range of the, 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 uh, the expense and advertising range. And you'll see there's, uh, there's not too much of a difference between NESDEC and MASC, uh, a large difference with HYA's proposal. And then just, just for fun, I, just before the meeting, I went through and, uh, looked, looked at those totals, if we just looked at the low end of the, of the expense and advertising categories. And, uh, NESDEC was at 15.3, MASC at 12.3, and HYA was still up at, in the mid twenties at 25,450. Just a few other additional comments. I also noted in, in the references and the list of previous searches over the last five years that they've conducted, NESDEC and MASC have conducted many searches in Massachusetts over these last five years. In reviewing the information that HYA provided, uh, I counted five Massachusetts searches that they have conducted during the same timeframe. So, so the really, the goal for this agenda item tonight is for the committee to discuss the three proposals in an effort to either identify one of the three consultants the committee would prefer to work with, or determine if you want one, two, or all three to come to a future meeting so you have the opportunity to interview them and make a decision on which organization to work with. And then last, uh, perhaps for some context, uh, I noted that the former Acton-Boxborough seven to 12 regional school committee worked with MASC on a superintendent search that was completed in early 2009. Uh, to my knowledge, although in, in going back, uh, you know, over 20 years now, uh, but to my knowledge, neither NESDEC nor HYA have conducted a superintendent search in the district previously. Uh, and then one last comment I wanted to make, that NESDEC was in fact, although they haven't done a superintendent search for the district, they were the search consultant that the district used earlier this year, uh, in conducting, uh, what, what I believe was a very successful, uh, director of finance search process. So they have some knowledge of the district already and of the two communities. Thank you.
Thanks.
I just have a quick preliminary question. When I was perusing the material, I noticed that, um, this is actually probably more for Dawn, um, that, is it, all right, um, is it, HYA, um, has like a lot of language translations... that, is it, all right, HYA has like a lot of language translation service. They provide that, and they also do a lot of outreach to minority organizations that could, you know, forward superintendent candidates to us. So, is knowing that we're, it's kind of a bit of a mess here in that sense, is that something that we need to, like, seriously look at?
My suggestion would be that if we're thinking about surveys, or forums, or focus groups, that that would not be, I mean, somebody with those kinds of experiences that could support us in that way would probably be helpful in engaging more members of our community. That would be my thought, but...
Comments, questions? Bridget?
So, out of the three that responded to us, and thank you for that great executive summary, too, that was really helpful, I would be interested in hearing from NESDEC and meeting them.
Yep, Paul?
I just wanted to echo that. I look at...
We can't hear.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to echo that, and I'm looking at HYA, and I just thought that they were a little off-center, and their costs were a little kind of out of whack with what I was expecting, so I just wanted to echo what Bridget said.
Beth?
See, Bridget said she only wanted to hear from NESDEC.
Yes. Dennis?
Why wouldn't we want to hear from all three? If we had three responses, I mean, it's three reputable firms, why wouldn't we want to hear from all three?
Bridget?
I was on the search committee when we used MASC, and so I had some experience with that search, and I wouldn't, personally, I had some issues with that search and the way it was conducted, so...
Was that 2009, or was that the last?
Yeah, 2009, yeah. FMS did the last one, and they didn't respond.
That's what it was.
Yeah, yeah, they didn't respond to this, so... And the other firm, I just, I thought it just didn't feel right, looking at their materials. It didn't seem to be a good match. They didn't have as much experience in Massachusetts. I didn't like the screening process as they described it, even though they're willing to work with us on that, if that's their standard operating practice. It doesn't feel right to me, and their cost was a lot higher, so I just, based on those things, I'd be interested in seeing.
Okay, so, I guess my point is that if we have all three, I mean, if we've reached out to three, well, reached out to five, and three have responded, I think it would, as part of our due diligence, we should talk to all three. Granted, what we see on a piece of paper, we might not necessarily, you know, maybe one of these things we don't like, you know, there might be a couple that we don't like. But I think we at least give them a chance to present themselves, present their credentials. I, you know, I'd like to kind of drill down a little on their process, and I think the more information that we have, the more of an informed decision that we can make.
Diane?
I'd actually, I mean, based on what you said, at first I was thinking NESDEC, but based on what you said, I agree with HYA, although I don't like that philosophy, that, I mean, it feels like it takes too much away from us, and that's just not what we want. But to give them a chance in at least presenting to them, so we can ask them questions, as opposed to seeing it on a piece of paper. I don't necessarily feel that we should bring MASC in. I think feedback that I've gotten from different people, not just Bridget, on the committee, was that, you know, that there were some concerns, and we're not going to see that in a presentation. We have to go by the experience that we had with that organization. No presentation's going to change the fact that when we did a previous search, there were some, there were some issues. And I would rather weigh that over a presentation, because someone in a presentation's going to show me only the best, when we've seen some things that, you know, are questionable. So, I would rather just bring maybe the two in, knowing that I do prefer NESDEC.
So, I would like to say that we are looking at a really tight timeframe here, and we are looking at a very full agenda over the next two weeks. And if the committee feels like they would like to bring in and have presentations, then we can do that. I mean, absolutely, support that. But just keeping in mind, if there's a general sense from the committee that you've made up your mind and you want to go with one firm over the other, then it, I think it would make a lot of sense to move forward with that, simply because we are in a crunch time and we've got so much work to do. But that's my opinion. Paul?
So, I have no objection to bringing all three in, to Dennis's point, but HYA would have to, would have to impress me. So, if we're going to have, if we're going to have one in, we might as well have all three, because it's only, at that point, it's, and this is what I was thinking, is the timeline, if we're going to take the time to organize one firm to come in, it's only a matter of a few hours to listen to the presentations for the others, so why not?
I don't, I think it's appropriate in whatever manner, frankly, the committee decides. And there's no rule of thumb. Committees go through a paper screening process, and some committees, because they're either aware of the organization, they've worked with them before, decide to invite that group in to speak, speak with. And other committees invite all three, other committees go through a process, and at times eliminate an organization or two. So, you know, I think the discussion needs to happen. The one thing that I would suggest, if, at the last meeting, I think there was, I think there was, there was a lot of interest around the table in getting this process started sooner rather than later, compared to a sample timeline that I had provided in the presentation. So, the one suggestion I would make is that if, if you're bringing back, if you're bringing back one, two, or three, or more than, more than one, then I would suggest you schedule a separate meeting to do just that. Because each presentation, you have to allow at least 30 minutes. You know, they can do a 15-minute presentation, but there will be questions that you'll have, you'll want to have a dialogue with them. So, with three, you're talking a minimum of 90 minutes, and then you're going to want to take some time to review what you've heard, take that into consideration, and perhaps make a decision that night after the three presentations. So, if the committee, and this is a process where it's helpful, that all members of the committee are at such a meeting. So, I think that's a fine process, but given the time constraints, I would propose that that's, that you look at a date, perhaps prior to November 9th, that might, everyone might be available, and then we can invite the representatives in.
I just wanted to answer one. So, Paul, I think that we do also have the option of making a decision tonight and inviting that, the group in to get started. So, I'm not saying that we would invite, I wasn't, I was saying that we can choose to invite two, three, all, one, but I wouldn't invite one in to give a presentation and then decide whether to use them or not. I think that we would make a decision, which, but we don't have to. Maya?
I'm surprised more people don't like HYA, because I think it takes some of the burden off of us, when, well, not just because we're incredibly busy, but because we have, questions are going to come up potentially about candidates, that it just leaves us in a, starting with a slightly more objective perspective, with professionals that do this, you know, for a living, and they can guide us. We did not make a marriage made in heaven last time, and so I'd be, I'm open to hearing what they have to say and trying a different formula, despite the cost. I think that this is an important process, and I'm not trying to just alleviate the burden, because it is our job to select a superintendent, but I think that there could be real advantages to doing things differently from the last time, and especially considering the purview of citizens, you know, as in respect to candidates. I think it might really be nice to have a more objective party helping us.
Diane?
I have to say, I'm a bit surprised at the hesitancy, or the, like, the sense that some people are really turned off by HYA, only because their search team includes a former superintendent of Concord-Carlyle, so it's really important that, I think that we have somebody on the search team for our consultant team, who like kind of understands this kind of corner of the world. And they did the Lexington search, and they did the Concord-Carlyle search, and they were both successful. And I, so the screening process, I would kind of need to hear more, because having been on the screening process for the interim, it's voluminous, and you know, we're, like, you're all a bunch of novices, basically, trying to figure out like what, what the certifications mean, and there's, I know there's training, but I wouldn't want the control completely taken away either, so I'm kind of like, hmm, not quite sure, but I'm not ready to just say, no, HYA. So, and also, I think, I don't really think we necessarily have to have all three, if there's, if there's, there are people clearly on the committee who've worked with MASC before and just didn't feel comfortable, so...
Any other thoughts? Yep, Tessa?
I was originally thinking, when I read through it myself, that the NESDEC seemed like the most appealing, but after listening to Maya, I really agree that there is something super appealing to having someone objective take over the decision of who even is a candidate, because I, we're never going to get out of that cycle, I don't think, where we are now. And I think that is really appealing, despite the cost.
Eileen?
Basically, I don't know all three of them, have no any experience at all, but I'm very curious about the advertising range, the charge, really different. So, may we get some information? And I hear, I definitely hear, you know, you two there said, and we feel, we felt that way, right? So, we have, we're shortening in time. If we trying to do this whole process, once again, we probably will consume another meeting, and then we're going to make a decision after that meeting. Is there possible for them to send us a little bit of detail?
I mean, it would, I think that Bill is exactly right, that we would definitely need to have another meeting, and I am perfectly, I think that, I'm getting a sense that that's kind of what people want, and let's, I mean, let's do that, let's, oh, well, Mary?
I'd like to suggest, though, we try to make a decision at that meeting.
Yes, that's what I was going to say.
And not hit the decision off yet, one more meeting.
Yes, but we can make him a decision at that night, and then be ready to go by the November 9th meeting. So, if there aren't any more comments, then I would suggest, and I would suggest, and I would ask Beth to set up a meeting between, oh, Bill has a comment.
I remember the comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Bill has a comment.
So, we have the same name, sorry. That was, that was, oh, thank you. That was convenient. Thanks. I just wanted to add and ask, I mean, I think we all know that this is going to be kind of an interesting search, because everything that's kind of preceded us here, and we obviously want to get a really strong candidate that's going to, going to be successful. Did any of the firms indicate that they're used to, I mean, I call them a story stock, I mean, anybody who's used to having to say, you know, don't get over the, you know, all the craziness, this is really a great place to work, and you really want to come here and make a career here. Did any of them talk about that? What, and what were your impressions of what they said?
In their proposals, they did not. And they will do, inviting them in to make a presentation, I believe that hopefully they'll do some due diligence and do some research themselves. And I, but I think that certainly is a very appropriate question that someone in the school committee would pose to them as part of their presentation.
Okay. And I may just pop a question. I thought it was interesting, or kind of surprising, that Futures Management, the firm that did the prior search, I mean, who we offered to say, come in and make, but they didn't, did they, they talk about why they didn't respond, or you just?
Not specifically, and not particularly. I do know that that firm, over the last number of years, has been doing fewer and fewer searches. I think last year, they were involved in maybe two in total. And so, over the last, I know over the last 10 to five years, that particular firm has made the decision to move away from this part of the business.
Okay, okay. I was actually on the screening committee for the former superintendent, so I worked a little bit with them, and they had their strengths and weaknesses, and things I liked and disliked. But one thing I did like about them, I think they sort of delivered, is they had kind of a, I don't know if it's a roster, but they knew, they knew kind of where quality candidates were, and they, you know, rather than just being kind of passive and, you know, putting out an advertisement or whatever and waiting for them, and they target people to come and talk, you know, to apply for the job. And I, I think particularly this situation, but any situation, that's, that's the way to go, yeah. I mean, you want to, you don't want to, you know, you want to target the right kind of person.
Sure, I think that's, that's, that certainly is the case with HYA. NESDEC certainly has a wide reach in New England and throughout the United States. MASC clearly has their targets, their go-to people. My belief and my feeling is that regardless of the district, I think that's, that's good, but I worry about limiting, frankly, a screening committee's access to the application pool, because, you know, there may be a really great candidate that these firms don't know. And I worry that if, if someone they don't know is a candidate, that they may get overlooked. So, and then the other thing is that, you know, having, giving the consultant more control over the screening process, remember that the committee determines the makeup of the screening committee. And there will be, you know, X number from the school committee, but there'll be even more than that number from representing the different stakeholders in the community. And so, you know, you're also by, by, I feel that by limiting the applications that the screening committee gets to review, you know, you're limiting the opportunity for the members of that committee that make up the other stakeholders in the community, the opportunity to weigh in on, you know, that, that application that, you know, they feel meets the candidate profile, but perhaps may not be on the radar screen, you know, of the consultants.
Thanks, Beth.
Right, I agree with that, too. Thanks.
Yeah, Steve?
Briefly, since I'm on the Town Manager Search Committee, and we're maybe two weeks ahead of you in schedule, we have interviewed three different consultants. What we focused on was what did we really want them to do? And to Bill's point, we did not want them to receive the applications and screen out people. We said we wanted to receive all the applications ourselves. Some of them said they'd do our public outreach for us, we decided that was our job. Some of us said they'd review the staff and get their comments for us, we decided that was our job. So, what we did is we sent our proposal to all three, saying, okay, this is what we want you to do. We want you to help write the profile, we want you to do the advertising, and we want you to assist us in screening, and we're waiting for them to come back with essentially rebids.
So, I think that we should, oh, that's okay, go ahead. No, go for it.
To Steve's point, what's the possibility that we go back to any, any one of these consultants to say, you know, can we, can we have participation in the search committee? Or, you know, can we tweak the proposal?
So, so both MASC and HYA did indicate that they certainly, this is, what they proposed was their preferred model, but they did indicate that they're certainly willing to work with committees on modifications that the committee would like to see.
Okay, so, with no more, I mean, if there's no more comment or questions, I'm going to ask if Beth could set up a meeting sometime between now and November the 9th, to, that we could call in the consultants. And it sounds like people want to hear from Nezdeck and HYA, so we'll invite those two to come in, and we really need everyone there. So, I'm sorry, Beth, but, yeah. So, I, I hope that, I hope the committee's prepared to make a commitment for another night to come and do this, because this is really important. If we're going to call these, these firms in, we need everyone there, ready to listen and vote. Did I say, yeah, two firms, two firms, the two firms. If we're going to, if we're going to ask them to come in and do a presentation, then we all, we should all be there to give input and hear it, and then make a decision together as a full committee.
So, I'm going to say one more thing, and then I promise I'll be quiet. Just to, as a heads up, and Beth and I will work on this tomorrow morning, the week of October 30th, there are no school committee-related or building committee-related meetings that week. I do know that some of you at the end of the week, or middle to the end of the week, will be at MASC, you know, perhaps that Monday, October 30th, or even Tuesday, oh, no, that's Halloween week, wow, that would be interesting. So, so, Monday, the 30th, maybe that would be our first shot, but, but we'll, we'll certainly work with everybody and see if we can get that done.
Is there a sense of the committee, is there a sense that people could do Monday the 30th? Is there anyone that absolutely cannot do Monday the 30th? Because that would be great, Beth would be so happy if we could do this tonight. I'm happy to call over to Monday. Seven o'clock tomorrow.
Is, is there anyone that cannot make it Monday at 7:00 PM? All right, that is incredible, okay.
Yeah, well, we should, too. Don't make it.
You know, that's their job, yes.
That's a problem.
Yeah.
So, are you saying Monday, October 30th?
It looks like it, I don't hear anyone going, no way, can't do it.
I mean, I have to switch around some stuff to see if they can do it.
Can you?
If they...
Okay, let's put it down. Okay. Thank you all very much, thank you. Okay. So, moving to the subcommittee reports, Bridgette? You can do real quickly.
Just in the interest of time, I'll do the short version. So, we had our first budget subcommittee meeting, and that was on October 11th, and it was really kind of organizational, getting up to speed. One thing we did talk about that we're going to bring back to the committee, probably for our next meeting, is we realized this budget subcommittee didn't ever do a real formal charge, and so we came up with a draft, but the committee should approve that, so we'll bring that to the next meeting. Otherwise, we talked about strategy, about E and D, went over some budget planning information, fiscal year 18, budget year-to-date capital planning, talked a little bit about the Acton Finance Committee point of view, and that's pretty much it. So, we're going to meet next in middle of November.
Okay, policy, Maya? Oh, sorry, not Maya, Katie, sorry.
Were the procedures that were changing in the packet, are we talking about those tonight? No? Not yet. The next, the next two meetings. All right, we're meeting again tomorrow morning, so we'll have more of an update next time, then.
Okay, great. Any other school member reports that people would like to share? Yeah, Diane?
Some news that was just sent to me by Pam Nurse, who is the liaison, she's on the school committee for the Minuteman Tech District, so for, interesting, for Act, for Bloxborough, just to listen in, I guess, but, so, Minuteman Tech is being commended by, or recognized by the Department of Education for the, for really like closing the achievement gap. They've got, they had incredibly high MCAS scores, and they're one of seven schools in New England that are, so I, I just wanted to pass that along, I told Pam that I would tell everybody here.
That's great.
Yeah. And just to note, we have four students there, so, yes, we care.
That's great. Yep, Paul?
So, I attended the resilience forum that was provided by Mr. Evans.
Rob Evans, yeah.
Rob Evans, and, yes, and I just wanted to say, it was, it was a wonderful forum, and there's another one that I think is going to be worth attending as well, coming up next, next week, is it? So, I would encourage going, going to those.
So, the one next week is a two-part series, it's a parent workshop with Dr., with Reina Rader-Schudnoffsky from the Benson Henry Institute, and so there is an RSVP, I think it's still open, it was sent out to the public, so if people want to come to that, they should RSVP. Terrific, thank you.
Yep, Diane?
We had the joint PTO meeting, so we've started off the year, and we have the schedule for the year. Marie was great, she came, and actually, she ended up running the whole meeting because it was all about her stuff. So, she went over school start time, the, the assistant funding, and a few other items, and it, it was a nice way to start off the year.
Okay, great, that's all, I'm going to, you want to do an FYI or anything? Okay, all right, so I'm going to move us, we're going to need to go into executive session. So, I move that we go into executive session to convene, to be convened under MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, and open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the board. We will come back to open meeting to adjourn, just for the purpose of adjournment. Paul?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, thank you.